Thanks. Yeah, I guess I'd like us to consider a slightly different approach to this. And that is with respect to the Board Committee of the Chair and the Chair on the Investment Committee. And the reason is because, at least until we complete the financing, there is expertise on this board that has to do with bond financings. Lynn and the Controller's Office, Treasurer's Office, the Department of Finance, myself. I wonder whether it might not be the right thing to do to utilize the skill set that is, has specific expertise on this board, to have an oversight committee, at least until the financing is completed, that represents some of the expertise on this board with respect to financing. And maybe that could be left to the Chair to appoint two people, including one representative that brings that expertise. But that would be my suggestion as to perhaps a change here.
All right.
Another option, I'm just reacting to your comment, another option, I think it could work, is kind of having a finance oversight committee for this first part of the project, being people with expertise and then having more the overall project oversight, as long as you weren't meeting together as four people and crossing paths. But that might work to have, so we have full continuity of the Chairs from day one to the end, and then having some finance expertise, as you pointed out, their first year. Does that make sense what I said?
Yeah, I would suggest that the better way to have that expert, that continuity is to have somebody on from day one who stays on.
So...
Because I think, I think two different, I mean, I think the issues that are going to arise in oversight in the first, until the construction, the financing is completed, I think it's complicated to separate out what are the financing oversight issues from the other oversight issues.
I appreciate that.
That's all.
Obviously, it'd be too cumbersome to have a committee that has to have public meetings and all that. We just, that would be, that's not going to work well with the flexibility of what you're trying to do. So you're going to have to keep it to a small meeting group to do that interim oversight, as we might call it. I mean, the Board, of course, has the overall oversight.
So Brian? Right now, we have two Board members that can be involved in something that potentially could come before the Board is a vote. Do you see that, anything in this oversight that might trip that? Or is it more along administrative?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if you have three people, you're going to have a...
We're going to have issues?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just was trying to think of what might come to the Board for a vote that we haven't already done.
Yeah.
So I couldn't think of anything, but you guys have a whole lot more experience on that than I do.
Yeah.
All right. Karen?
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
When we talk about oversight, I know that Pension Solutions has an oversight consultant, as you, you know, you referred to earlier. And then you said that Ridge Capital has a scheduled oversight. But is there a consultant that would, I mean, would we have the, is there someone that would be on the same vein as Graham, Grant Thornton is to Pension Solution as to somebody else to the Board?
Yeah, that is Ridge Capital. And it's not just, it's just not scheduled oversight. It's actually...
Go ahead. Go ahead. Click in. Click in. No, no. Paul, click in, in queue, and we'll come back to you. Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Karen.
So you were going to, you were going to respond to that, right? Okay, so I'm just making...
So Ridge Capital is the construction manager oversight of the headquarters expansion project. So they do have oversight of all of the construction activities. They're the ones that are providing us this report every single month as they are, they're on the boots, I mean, they're the boots on the ground with the project as the project begins. They're ensuring the subcontractors are complying with all of their contract requirements. They are, they are who we're relying on to make sure that as construction deadlines loom and as, as, and to make sure that the budget is being spent appropriately and things stay within budget.
But they don't have a sole reporting relationship to the Board.
No, they don't.
So they are not the same, then?
No.
Not in that dimension.
No, I was using that as a comparison. So, and I, and I, sorry, I hope that I didn't confuse anybody, but they are, so Grant Thornton is your Board Consultant.
Right.
Ridge Capital is not your Board Consultant. But we do pay them to oversee this project for Calsters. So they're, they're who we, Calsters, rely on to ensure that the project is on time and within budget.
They're more like John and Maximus, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So then Ridge Capital will not... Ridge Capital will not be here reporting to us as Graham Thornton is reporting to us, correct?
They could be physically, they don't have an authority relationship in that manner. They would definitely be available to come to each meeting. I'm not sure what a person would do to hire to watch them, to watch all the other people. I mean, that would be a lot of cost, and I'm not sure what, what checking value that creates for you, other than a lot of consultants on consultants. But they're certainly here available. They're, they're watching on behalf of the organization, the project.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I know that there's a protocol. It's okay for me to call Graham to ask questions and to Pension Solutions. He works with staff, and he's our consultant. So if I have any questions about how it's going, or what questions do I think I need to ask staff, I can go to him. But it's not the same for me to do that to Ridge Capital, correct? For me to have that opportunity to do that, or...
Probably, you know, probably you could, if you wanted to. I would, I would probably recommend that you go through the project team to get, you know, and if the Board has a comfort level that they want Michelle Azavito with Ridge to come and present at one of the Board member meetings, or actually provide you some information from her viewpoint on how the project is going, we definitely can do that. The information that we're going to be sharing with the Board does come from Ridge Capital. So it is their, it is their voice coming through us as far as how the project is going. Of course, we're very involved, because we have regular meetings with them, especially through the design process. Once the construction kicks off, we're going to continue to have those status meetings with them to ensure that the project is, is running smoothly and there's no risks or issues. So, I mean, I think you could. I think that would complement, complicate things a bit. I would probably recommend that you do go through, through staff to get the information that you need.
So Jack, maybe it'd be beneficial if we got your thoughts on why staff felt it was important that the Board have an independent consultant to us overseeing Pension Solution, but not for the building?
Well, and I wouldn't say that that is critical. I mean, we would want, we would want oversight ourselves, whether it's to you or to ourselves. I mean, I don't think we, we actually feel that's always required. That project, though, technology projects have such a special quality and history to them, I guess we'd have to say, if any of us had worked in large organizations, that we're all nervous about those, the complexity of them. And also, you know, it's, it's easy as a Board. The language of a technology project is so abstract and distant from most of your normal duties, that I think it's important to have an independent translator of the project that you might not have in other things. This project isn't any different than anything else we have in the investment portfolio. We wouldn't hire checkers on checkers on checkers there either. So I don't, I don't see this very different than anything else we would do in the investment area. It's high-profile, for sure. But, you know, our view is, that's why we carefully hired an oversight construction company, because we need that oversight done carefully. If we felt there was need for something, the oversight person to be checked again, I think we would, we would hire that party ourselves as well. We obviously don't feel that's necessary in a construction.
All right.
It's a little bit more straightforward. This project's a little bit more straightforward. So I think that once we get the GMP in August, and you know what the target value, target value budget is for the project moving forward, then they're really the ones that are making sure that those subcontractors that have bid, these bids out are, are, you know, performing to the level they need to be performing, and then making sure that as they're billing us for certain activities, that those activities have actually been completed. So they're more just of an oversight, a construction oversight for us. If that makes sense.
I'm okay for now. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Sharon?
So I wanted to ask you, Jack, back to, you know, Paul's suggestion, or kind of dealing with the bond financing, because my understanding is we have a lot of eyes on that process, correct?
We do. We have bond attorneys, underwriters, experts in that area.
And so I'm just wondering, and I guess because Paul and other people have more expertise in this area, the bond financing piece of that, is that, I mean, my, my general understanding of it is it kind of happens at the beginning. We get the funding together. We have the money to build a building. I mean, how much does the bond financing expertise piece of it carry through throughout the entire project, or how much of it is front-loaded when we're obtaining the financing?
Well, right now, we're doing, are you doing weekly or bi-weekly meetings, Julie?
Biweekly.
Biweekly. So right now, it's intense. All of the experts are on the calls with Julie, and Lisa, and Brian, on going through the strategy of the, the process. And then, actually, you do come back with a role in this. This isn't like we're just going to come back and say, yeah, we got the money. Actually, this is actually, does absolutely require active Board involvement, unlike building the building. So that's why Julie's going to outline for you. Most of you have, except for probably two Board members, three Board members up here haven't done a bond offering. So we want a next Board meeting run through the educational process around that, so you all get to participate in that. And then we actually need a Board vote around some official documents surrounding the offering in May.
In May.
That's why we want to have an educational piece first, to make sure you know what, what that affirmation is, so that we can do the offering. So it's, the intensity is, particularly now, through getting that ready for the market.
But in terms of expertise, you know...
I mean, obviously, we've hired, we've hired the best of the best that work the California market, for sure.
I think I'm just, I'm a little, I don't want us to get too far in, not that we shouldn't be in the weeds, but I don't want to get too far in the weeds in creating several sub-oversight committee. I hear what Paul's saying. I just, it gives me, it gives me more comfort to know that you're coming back in May. We're going to have this conversation. We're going to have a vote. I, obviously, I would prefer the originally proposed structure, but open to having the Board give input on that.
I think Julie's going to give more details, too, when, when you're ready.
Great.
When you're ready on that.
So we don't need to make a decision before we get into the details?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jacqueline?
I'm not sure what the right structure is, but I wanted to kind of follow up on what Sharon was talking about, about the structure and whether there was sufficient expertise on, on the bond side. I feel like the item itself right now is a little light, like, we don't know who's issuing the bonds, right? We think maybe it's probably I Bank, that's where we're going. But considering how the bond financing came to the committee late in the discussion, and the way that it came, or not to the committee, to the Board, and the way that it came to the Board, I think that there's value in having a discussion about whether it's appropriate to use some expertise on this Board, at least initially, and I don't know what the timeframe is. And I'm certain, and I will, I would say that, you know, especially the Treasurer's Office, especially since they've been so involved up to now, but whoever and however the Board Chair wants to deal with that, I think, I don't understand it well enough from what we've been presented so far, and I know that more information is forthcoming, but I don't see the, the harm in having folks involved at this point, when it seems like there is a lot of work, and maybe that will drop off at some point. And I know that, obviously, staff and bond counsel and our advisors will continue to kind of monitor it going forward, but right now, I don't have a lot of details about what we're doing. I don't know if you all feel like you do.
Yeah, I think Julie's going to kick that off as soon as we clear our line here.
But I, I mean, I don't, I guess I would say that I don't know if, if Paul has the right structure, or what the right structure is, but I think that there's tremendous value to those comments and to bringing to our attention that perhaps there is expertise that would be good for oversight of the bond financing specifically, as opposed to the construction schedule and budgeting.
Paul? Oh. Somehow, that was weird.
Yeah, I was, I put myself in line to respond to Lisa comparing Ridge, because they're not, they're not responsible to the Board. But I think one of the reasons, in addition to the fact that the project isn't as complex as Pension Solutions, is because if you have expertise on the Board to do the oversight, you don't need somebody to be an advisor to you. One of the reasons we have Bob Yetman as an advisor to ARM is because we don't have a CPA on ARM. If we did, maybe we can get Fiona to be on. Maybe we wouldn't need a, a, an advisor. So, so, so the whole point is that we should use the expertise that we have on the Board. And that's all I'm saying, is we have expertise here, and why don't we use the expertise we have? It's absolutely true that we have assembled an excellent team, but that doesn't mean that we don't provide oversight of the teams, right? I mean, that's, that, I can tell you about a lot of bond issues that have gotten into a tremendous amount of trouble. And it's very possible that that happens. And so all I'm suggesting is, when we have expertise, why don't we use it?
Thank you.
And just, if you go down that route, we would need to do a conflicts check on, on at least the Treasurer's Office. I'm not sure about that, because they are on the I Bank Board.
Well, they're also the agent.
Yeah, and so just, I want to make sure you just heard that.
That it could be more complicated than just simply appointing someone. Okay.
The Department of Finance has...
Guys, hang on a second. We are like way late. So can we, Julie, can you go around, please?
Ready to hear about bond financing?
Yes.
Okay, so I am pleased to report that we do have a financing team in place, including a team of professionals that will be assisting us through this transaction. Those professionals have experience issuing tax-exempt lease revenue bonds, and those professionals include Montague, DeRose, and Associates. They're our municipal advisor, and they're really there to advise us throughout this process from beginning to end, including best practices for selling bonds, such as the method for sale, the terms, the timing. We also have Oric, Harrington, and Sutcliffe. They're our bond counsel, and they will opine on the bond structure, that it's valid, and that it meets the requirements to issue the bonds in a tax-exempt status. We have Stradling, Yoka, Carlson, and Roth as our disclosure counsel, and they will be preparing the legal documents that are needed for this transaction, as well as advising us on our disclosure obligations. Now, staff has been meeting with this professional team on a very regular basis to determine the financing structure that is most advantageous to Calsters. And so that's where we're at today. And so moving forward, we will start to finalize some decisions related to the financing structure, so that we can present that to you for approval. So we will be coming back to you in March to provide you with education on this process, get a little bit in the weeds, and go over the details of how this process is going to work, and what your involvement is, including giving you a preview of what our recommendations are to date, and, and a preview of the legal documents that you will see at the May Board meeting, because we'll need your approval on that before we can move forward and send those documents to the bond issuer, so that they can approve the transaction. And then that will set us up to sell the bonds in either August or September, depending on when the GMP is finalized. So that's a very quick summary of where we're at today and the timeline that we hope to follow. Again, much more details to come, including education for you that will be provided at the March meeting.
Are there any questions for Julie? Seeing none? Is there anything else?
Just to make sure that we're cleared, so clear direction on how often you want to hear from us on the progress. I think what I heard is at every meeting, and it could be either a standalone item or something that we put in the CEO report. Just want to make sure that I'm clear on that.
Pleasure of the Board?
That's fine.
That sounds good.
Okay.
All righty. And we'll leave it to you to determine how that's going to be, whether it's a separate agenda item, or if it's through Jack's report, that's fine.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just going to mention one thing for the audience. If anyone's flying to, oh, sorry.
We can go to, we can go right to that if you want to discuss it as a Board, or I thought I heard you would leave it up to the Chair and Vice Chair, but that's okay. We can do that.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm...
We didn't make a decision.
We didn't make a decision.
We weren't...
So when are we going to make a decision?
Okay, so go ahead.
How are we going to make a decision, or when are we going to make a decision? I mean, I'm fine not to make a decision now, but on the other hand, I think...
I think we need to make it right away.
I think we should, too. So I'm just...
It seemed, it seemed like we were moving on to a different agenda item.
We, we were going to.
So...
So do you want to make it as, go ahead. If you want to do that now as the Board, go ahead.
I think, I think what's hard is Paul proposed something different today in response to something, and we just, so we just heard it today, and so I think it would be helpful to...
Hear from the rest of the Board?
Process it a little bit, or we could hear from the rest of the Board. I don't, I guess the question is, do we just talk about it as a Board and make a decision now?
We can do that. Absolutely.
My only, my only concern is that we're not going to meet again for another two months.
I know.
There's, this is a pretty short timeframe for the, for the financing. So I, that's why, that's why I suggested, what my suggestion was, was that we leave it to the, to the Board Chair, but maybe hear from Board members as to whether they think there's some validity to this.
That works.
I've suggested that. I think Jacqueline suggested that. Others might weigh in, and then I'm happy to leave it to you.
Absolutely. Just nobody had weighed in, so it was...
Right. Well, so I just didn't know where we were going with it next.
Eric?
Yep. I, I'm going to lend my support to what Jacqueline and Paul had suggested, to tap into the expertise that's on the Board relative to, to the oversight. I think it's the logical thing to do.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think there's...
And I...
All right. We'll do it. We'll figure it out, who it is, and we'll put that together, and we'll do it right away.
Without violating Bagley Keane, right?
Without violating Bagley Keane. All righty.
Okay.
Joy?
I'll just say that I also support trying to move in that direction if we can, I recognize there are the logistics and Bagley Keane and timing issues to work through, so, but I think if we can get there, it would be wise to do so.
Sounds good.
Dana?
Yes. Go ahead and...
I'm sure, I'm sorry. I'm sure Jennifer has this in the notes in the minutes, but just from my level of comfort, if there's closing in the loop, how that will be communicated back?
We'll get Jack to send an email out to who's been selected.
Right, and how that works, so that there's closure there in the circle.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
If you're, are you done? I was going to make just a small announcement to the audience on something before you start the next item. Are you done?
Go.
Just for our audience members, if you're flying to Los Angeles tonight, go ahead and check your flights. There seems to be some problem with flights to Los Angeles. So I know, all of our Board members, you know that already, right?
I already know.
Yeah. So we got, we got sleeping bags on order for you. There's no problem at all.
Getting home tonight.
Lori's got an extra bed.
Yeah. So, sorry.
Sacramento.
I don't, I don't know.
We're all going to stay with Karen tonight.
Come on. Andrew.
Yeah.
Graham.
Oh, yeah.
And just a reminder, guys, we're running about an hour and a half behind. We do have appeal scheduled in 40 minutes.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the new Board Member, Keith and Frank. Just step out. I think I just really want to just say that, you know, we really appreciate the support from the Board. I just want to take the moment and just to show you, it's just not all about Ashish, Andrew, and Cassandra talk about the project, and Graham came to the commentary here, but I think we have in the back, we have CGIE Executive, David Algado. You, few of you met yesterday. Prashant Mittal is the new Director of the Pension Solution. He's there. And we have Jennifer, Gina, Randy, IBNB, and IPAC. So it's all the folks. We have our PSSC Chair, Vice Chair, Marissa, and Diane, so it's all, is here, and a lot of like 300-plus people right now hearing this. So I think this is a big initiative for us, for Calsters, so just, I was just chatting with Keith in lunchtime. We started a long time back. We still have a long way to go, so I just want to give the context. Okay. So we'll go over, this is our typical agenda, where we left off in November, what progress we made so far. We just go over our functional rollout status. I will talk about the critical activities, data conversion, and then we'll go over the challenges and what effort we are doing to mitigate those and next steps. So our tech team, Andrew and I will take, and then in the end, Graham will take that one.
Okay. And we, again, will keep this slide in front of you as we move through the life cycle of this project, just to remind everyone, especially give you some context to the new members as to why we are engaged in this project. I've got some detailed examples, but in the interest of time, I think we'll just move forward. So I want to spend a little bit of time just on sort of where we are at. You've heard some conversation about the employer readiness assessments. We are also moving through contractor acceptance testing. The news there is that we had some test cases that were delivered late. However, Calsters is working to identify which of the overlapping resources we need to, to move around in order to stay on schedule, as well as the user acceptance testing that is planned to start in June of 2019. And we have prioritized resources in order to meet that schedule pressures. We're also continuing to develop new test cases to make sure that we are appropriately able to test the functionality of the new system. In terms of the employer readiness assessments, so we had some conversation about that in the new file format regulatory packet item a little bit earlier today. Just want to reiterate that the training for the employer readiness, I'm sorry, for the employer readiness environment, or for that new file format, progress is going to start in the fall of 2019. Will continue all the way through 2020 and into 2021. We've got a comprehensive training plan that allows us to go to all of the direct reporters and talk to their staff, both their payroll and human resources staff that provide the reporting to us, as well as their information technology staff that need to understand what modifications may need to be made to their system. We also have a robust learning management system, so as we roll this, this training out to all of those direct report employers, we're able to track their progress as they go through the various modules of the training. We focus the modules to be really clear and specific in terms of what the employers will need to do in order to be able to report. We also have, you know, for those employers who we identify will not be able to report on the new file format, we have a separate track for the old file format. They'll need to make a couple of modifications to the existing file in order to continue reporting. So as soon as we identify that an employer, a direct report employer, is going to need that kind of assistance, we're able to immediately put them into the appropriate learning track and give them the tools they need to report successfully at GoLive in 2021. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
So data conversion, I think we talked about in the past, and this is a very critical activity in the project, and all these big, largest projects, modernization project, always because of the legacy data, always enterprise struggle with that. But I'm happy to report you, we have a big team, 20-plus team dedicated, working with CGI collaboratively, and working all this data, is just to give you the context, around 350 million records we're converting every month to mock-up. So it's just big effort, but we are seeing a lot of success in there. So when we are seeing this success, and it's a little bit unusual for organizations to just see that is too much, you know, so much good happening there, we're just working with Larry's team to just see that maybe we can add some more oversight in there, just to see our data is going, and we are importing the right data. So we're working with Larry's team to just see where in the project we can put some check and balance in there. So we'll have a little bit more comfort level, because it's just, in the end of the day, if we don't have a good data of how we are making the decisions. So, but so far, the functional rollout one, we have 100% completed that one mapping, and then functional rollout two, we are 50% done. Demonstration, I think few of, you know, saw that one demo in the past. I think this is a great addition to the project. We are just checking the progress, whatever we are discussing in, in meeting rooms. This is also, this is third one is happening in February fourth. But so far, the demo, after the demo done, I think team is a little bit more confident about we selected the right tool for pension administration. We are actually happy to say after the demo, we didn't have too many gaps. So our design session and after the design session, this is a working copy of the application and so far looking very good. And Friday, next Monday will be a big, I think is the demo in the past was just a small demo, but this one will covering it quite a bit. Andrew can.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to add that, you know, this, this third demo is like Ashish said, the largest. And specifically, the demo is going to include calculation, the benefit calculation piece, which is of course the heart of the system. And so we're going to be paying close attention to that as well as looking at the member self-service portal and how that's going to function. Because of course, this is how members will interact with the new system.
Thank you, Andrew. Any question for this?
When you say demo, who is the, who is the?
Audience?
Who are the participants of that demonstration?
So the, our core team members who is working in new chat session and all, so they, they are discussing with the CGI what it looks like. And then they are giving the demo to them. And then we inviting a lot of other functional, the business folks to just come and see that one.
So basically, it's for staff?
Yeah.
Correct, primarily CalSTRS staff.
Not for employers, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to?
I was just going to say, you're invited to come if you would like to attend.
Yeah.
You should. We'd be happy to have you.
Okay, so move along. The functional rollout two, design, development and testing. Design is hundred percent complete. We are still negotiating with the CGI with some scope items, which I'm hoping that we will wrap it up very soon. But it's a hundred percent complete. We are working in the development and unit test from the CGI. We are working closely with them. We have some stress in the schedule, which we'll talk about our challenges and mitigation. But so far, we're not hitting any critical item that, okay, we are not, you know, the schedule is not looking viable. But I think we'll learn a little bit more this month and next month. Any questions regarding this?
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the challenges and mitigations that we're undertaking in response to those. First is that adoption of the new file format. You've heard us talk about that. And, and the focus is really on the employer readiness activities and the training plans that we've talked about. As well as, as making sure that we develop a track for employers that aren't able to implement the new file format at GoLive. So that they're still reporting on the old file format successfully. And then this prompt effective communication, team CGI and CalSTRS are continuing to work together. In order to make sure that we can identify issues early and on both sides and talk about how to mitigate whatever challenges we may have. We're really focused on communications and collaboration among the project team leads and the executives. We are also looking at FR one schedule and resources in terms of optimizing our approach to testing. When it comes to the functional rollout two, we're really focused on evaluating the impact to CalSTRS resources due to the size of FR two. The, the size of FR two, as we have finished, as Ashish just mentioned, all of the design has increased just in terms of the overall implementation. So we're, we're looking carefully at what that impact is to our resources.
Yeah, I just want to add, you remember that we, last year, we came to you about the change request, the one thirty B we called. So we fit gap and all, after that we came up and I, you granted like thirty-four million dollar. So we're talking about that scope and we are just realizing that how much is impact to CalSTRS.
And so then, a- a- as we're just talking about the scope and budget pressures from the upcoming demos and the testing. We are continuing to use that scope determination process that we shared with you in past meetings. In terms of how CalSTRS and CGI work through potential new scope and whether or not that's included in the contract. And working through the change management or the, I'm sorry, the, the change request or change order process. And then we are working with the CGI, our counterparts on CGI in terms of positioning FR two rollout for success. And also looking at the continuity of CGI resources in terms of the, making sure that we've got all of the depth that we need on the ground. In order to successfully meet our schedule. Then when we get to the next steps, so we're really again focused on the, the schedule that Ashish mentioned and the resources. Making sure that this latest iteration of the schedule and the staffing plan meets all of CalSTRS expectations. And has the sufficient depth that's necessary for success. We're also, as you all know, focused on the employer readiness assessments. We have a preliminary report that's just out and we'll have a final report in the next couple of months. That will give us a good idea of which of our employers are going to be ready for implementing, implementing the new file format and which will need more support. And then of course, we've got the regulatory process underway. And we are preparing for another fit gap exercise for the third functional rollout this spring. FR three is smaller in scope than FR two, so this fit gap exercise doesn't have quite the same potential for surprises. However, we want to make sure both CalSTRS and CGI that we have a clear understanding of what's expected out of functional rollout three. And we can take any questions that you may have before we go to Graham.
We don't have any, so bye. Good afternoon, Graham.
Thank, thank you. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Graham Finley with Grant Thornton here to present our regular independent project oversight report. And yes, there we are, great. So I want to start basically with a sort of top line summary of where the project is. So the project remains on schedule and on budget. As Andrew and Ashish mentioned, we're looking forward to the third demonstration of the functionality on Monday. And we have no reason to believe that that demonstration won't be as successful as all the rest. It's been a pretty good process so far. It's confidence builder and we expect the one on Monday to just go as well as the others. Although as it's been noted, it is larger and quite a bit more complex. So we'll see. But they've all gone pretty well so far. So that's all positive. That said, there have been some challenges, mostly schedule related, that the project's been undergoing since the holidays. And so I wanted to focus most of my comments around those. And it's not to sort of blow it out of proportion or lose the context of the fact that, you know, as we're looking at the project, it's in a pretty decent shape right now. But I do think it's of value for the board to have a little bit more insight into the nature of some of these challenges and what the project is doing to address them. So with that, I titled this slide transparency and collaboration. Because that's really a big focus for the project right now. You will have heard Andrew using many of those same words, as well as Ashish just a minute ago. And I, I'd say one of the big drivers for the focus around this area, it's really a few events that have happened since the last time that we had a board meeting. And in particular, I'll highlight one. There was a, there was, there was a mistake in the project schedule in November related to delivery of a set of test cases. That were due to be delivered late November. And those ended up being pushed into January. It didn't impact any of the milestone dates for the project, which is why the project is still on schedule. But it did have an impact on resources where people had to be moved around from what was intended to be done at, at very little, at very little notice. And this has somewhat dented CalSTRS' confidence in the schedule itself and, you know, the path going forward in two different ways. I see the first way was, okay, there was a mistake in the schedule. These things happen. But if that was there and nobody caught it, what else might be there? And maybe there's something else that we haven't seen as well. So it's, it's raised some doubts and it's created, I think, a fair degree of scrutiny on the schedule itself to make sure, okay, to make sure there's nothing else in there that perhaps was missed. So that's point one. The second point was really around the process for planning. And if these things occur in the future, maybe there's a problem that's seen coming up. Or maybe it's not even a problem yet, but there might be one that somebody thinks is coming up. What is the process for addressing those challenges and communicating those challenges in a transparent and collaborative manner upfront? And so as you might expect, there's been a lot of, I think, fairly intense conversation between CalSTRS and CGI since the holidays around exactly this, exactly this topic. And, you know, we've heard directly from pretty much all parties at multiple levels in the organization. A real commitment to be more transparent with each other as well as to respond well to that transparency in a collaborative manner. And for us, the sort of a, you know, there's a three-part solution to this kind of issue when it comes up. The first is really due diligence around the scheduled product itself. So the actual plan is felt to hold water and be complete. But the second, which we think is at least as important, is confidence in that planning process. So that, you know, CGI and CalSTRS are in constant direct communication. And if any concerns are identified by any, any party, they're brought up immediately. And nobody feels any sort of need to edit themselves or to, you know, worry about a reaction. But people are willing to be transparent and that, that's, you know, accepted and rewarded, if you like, by the other party. So that's important. And then the third area is frequent incremental delivery of work products. Because there's nothing that, you know, builds confidence more than actual seeing the product, right? And if you remember going back a year ago, when the, originally there was a schedule extension that was recognizing it to happen. One of the things we talked about was the, the idea of doing demonstrations. So people could see the software as it's being developed incrementally and they don't have to wait until user acceptance testing. And that started, and I think it's been pretty successful to date. What we're talking about is almost that same idea of it a much more granular level as individual work products have been developed. Delivering them on, you know, every few weeks, there's real product being seen and it, it, it allows people to see, okay, it's real, it's coming. And we don't have to just tape it with word for it, if you like. So we think all three of those are necessary. As sort of, you know, building and maintaining confidence across all parties. We've heard both CalSTRS and CGI sort of, you know, commit that that's the way they want to be running the project. And so that's what we're really, you know, going to be looking forward to seeing. And I think, you know, there's a lot of focus on the schedule now and the rest of this month. I anticipate it'll be a topic for the March presentation because at that point, we should know where we stand with the schedule. And if we're sort of back in a position of having sort of strong confidence in the path forward. But that's, that's one of, I wanted to give you a little bit of insight into some of that back and forth that's been happening. Some of the, you know, the issues that project's been wrestling with and what they're doing to try and address them.
Thank you, Graham. That's interesting. And I can't go back any further than Karen.
Here you go, technology.
Can you hear now?
So let me go to, so can you re?
I think she's ready now.
Go ahead. Somehow the request to speak mode got checked on. Must have been when I was exiting somebody or something.
No problem. Thank you. So thank you. Thanks for the, for the presentation. And Graham, just sort of, you know, an update on some of the specific focus areas to try to address the issues that have come up. And, you know, you say in your, in your bullets that the schedule issues have dented CalSTRS' confidence. I mean, I think it's, it's dented mine as well. It was, it was disheartening to read about the schedule issues. And also just about the issues around communication. Because if I recall, you know, when we had to sort of hit the, the reset button and, you know, negotiate and we established the relationship with CGI. One of the issues that was identified was, were communication issues and not having the right people, I think on the CGI side. Engaged on the project to be working with us in the way that we needed them to. So I, I wasn't happy to see, you know, th- these issues around the, the error in the schedule, but also just the communication and transparency challenges. You know, I mean, what is, are, are, you know, are you, I, I feel like this is sort of, you know, take two. Are, you know, what's your, what's your degree of confidence that we'll, you know, get it right this time?
I mean, we're not, I would say we're concerned, but not overly concerned. In the sense that this kind of stuff happens a lot. I mean, I'll guarantee you, this isn't the last time something like this will happen on the project. Because, you know, schedules are very complex things. They're never perfect. There will be a missed date, you know, it's inevitable. You do everything you can to prevent it, but it's going to happen. How you respond to it is at least as important, right, as, as the product itself. I will say, I think there's been some, there has been some changes in the CGI team since the time we were talking about in terms of, you know, additional staff. And I think some changes in operating models. And I, what we're talking about here is almost, it's institutionalizing some of the things that people have talked about doing. But haven't necessarily stuck. If there's anything out of this whole exercise and sort of the, the excitement that's generated over the last couple of months that I, I hope is a, a sort of a positive out of it. I think it's focused people on the need to really institutionalize this stuff and not just sort of fall back into the way we've been doing things. I think there's an acknowledgement of that. And that's what, you know, we'll be sort of looking to try and identify that it's really happening. But I, I do think there's a, there's a real focus on this now, maybe more so than there was in the past.
So, you know, I also understand that there was an error in the schedule that, you know, we, neither CGI caught nor, nor did we. Did, it, it sounds like though, having identified that issue, we're now scrutinizing the schedule that's before us. And have we, you know, do we have a better sense of the types of things to look for in order to identify an error? Like what we, what, what, what came to be?
So we provided all the points, you know, we, we prioritize it. And I, we are waiting in January four, February fourteenth, they are delivering. So this Friday, they're delivering something. And then we had to return back if we are accepting or not accepting that. So it's a, February fourteenth is a big day for us that if we have a verifiable schedule with all the resources in there.
And in terms of, of that miss, if you will, both CGI and team CalSTRS have, have engaged in lessons learned activities in terms of how that happened. So that we can build in processes to prevent that from happening again in the future. However, as Graham said, the schedule is a very large and complex thing. And, and, you know, we, we may potentially have some sort of challenge as yet unknown ahead of us. But in terms of this particular issue, that is something that we have engaged in lessons learned activities around.
And I, and I understand the point that all of you are making that the schedule's very complex and this probably won't be the, the last time this happens. I think what was maybe the bigger concern was the, how this identified that communication and transparency still needed to be improved. So I really hope that we can see some, you know, progress made there. And so my last question is, you also mentioned that this, this would have an impact on resources. You know, I think we had to move people around on the team to manage the change and schedule. And oftentimes, impact on resources impacts cost. Is, do, do we know that? And, or is it too, too soon to know?
I would say at this point in time, it's too soon to know. We were able to move resources around without impacting cost at this point in time. So we're, we're not anticipating any, any sort of cost impact from what previously happened.
Thank you.
Eric?
Thanks, Dana. And thanks, Joy. Those pretty much reflect almost exactly what my concerns were. You know, when I read the report and the, the accompanying PowerPoints, to dent one's confidence initially was quite disheartening to me. And I had a level of anxiety around that. But I had a little bit more. I guess some, the anxiety level was brought down a bit when I better understood that there was an error with the scheduling. And I understood without, no one captured that or was able to catch it in, in the planning. I wish, from my perspective, take a, okay, mistake. It's meant to, it happens, right? It just, so it's okay to make mistakes. There's enough pressure on everyone to get this job done. For, we have an interest, CGI has an interest. I see us working on parallel paths, the same objective. And there's a lot at stake for everyone. What was troubling to me was how that was the response. So it's not so much what happens to us in life, but, but how we respond to it. So I would like, you know, going forward for people to be more proactive, more transparent, more collaborative, more direct when these errors occur. And that's the message that I want to be delivered, that that's the expectation. And um, that's the message that I want to be delivered, that that's the expectation.
I can, can, can tell you that in the past few weeks, just in the month of January, Ashish and I have had conversations with our counterparts on the CGI side as well as at the project manager level and and even at Cassandra and Dave's level. And she can speak to that, uh really frank conversations about what we can do specifically to improve communication and collaboration on the project. And we are seeing a shift in that area. So that is something that we will continue to focus on moving forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, and I'm sure, well, I'm hopeful that it will happen. So.
Lynn?
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you for the report. And I also very much appreciated Joy's comments, Harry's comments, and wanted to echo those as well, too. And I think it's a little bit frustrating that after the long negotiations and heavy lifting that Cassandra and team did over a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago, that we're back here with um our confidence being shaken a little bit in CGI. And I guess I'd like to ask all three of you sitting up there, do you have confidence that they um are going to be transparent, trustworthy partners going forward on this?
I I'll speak for myself and and, you know, I would invite Dave Delgado to come up and and speak to you as well. Um, you know, I think that we've had some really frank conversations about what CalSTRS' expectations are moving forward. And I know that CGI has been responsive to those. And just in terms of, you know, that community of practice that you've heard me talk about before with other pension funds in other parts of the country, Canada, Europe, um, these kinds of long projects that are very difficult do um often, we often see these kinds of iterative um challenges come up over time where um there's, there's just, there are very difficult things, it's a very complex schedule. Um, and and so occasionally, there needs to be sort of a reset. And what what really matters is the quality of the relationship. And so we all recognize that and are doing what we can to improve communication and collaboration at all levels in the project. I think that, you know, on the ground level, between the SMEs and the business leads, things are are working well and and we at the highest levels of the project are doing the same, uh making that kind of commitment to move forward so that we can continue to expose issues and challenges and problems quickly as they arise because on a project this large and complex, those surprises are are going to happen.
So I would, I mean, I I do really believe that CGI is committed to the success of the project and, you know, that the interests are aligned. Although sometimes, you know, in in day-to-day meetings, it can feel hard to to recognize that, but it is the case. Um, of course, you know, you're, you're paying us to be a professional skeptic, right? So we're always, you know, looking at that from a, you know, it's our, it's our job to be sort of doubters, if you like. But I do know that, um, you know, Dave could speak to himself, but um, you know, CGI is, CGI is committed to the project. Believe what he's told me, um, what we're, you know, what we're obviously looking for is the, just to monitor that the, you know, the delivery matches the the intent.
You know, one of the things that the board has uh talked about in communication and and in debate is, you know, we can be really hard on the issues, but we want to be kind on the people. And and I think for us, I think that seems to be working. And and I think that's a different mindset on on how you communicate and it makes it easier to bring things up. So that's my two cents. So, Perry, did you wanna, oh, go ahead, Cassandra.
You know, I just, I did want to comment because I think that all parties, or both parties, everybody involved, is very confident that we're gonna have a successful implementation. We're confident in the product, we're confident where we are. We've done a really good job this last year after the negotiations. That's why um we reacted so aggressively when this issue came up because we want to make sure that we address it and get any, get the resolution and a plan, a plan going forward should those issues continue to move forward. Um, we have staff on the project that are deeply committed to uh the work effort. They, you know, if you have, even Christine, when she came up, you can tell the energy in which she is um holding that that responsibility. I mean, it's very, very, uh, that's a, it's a lot of responsibility for staff and they are very deeply committed and working together. And the team members are working together between uh CalSTRS and CGI on on the project. It's our responsibility to govern the project appropriately and and protect CalSTRS' interests. And CGI feels the same way. We're all trying to reach the same end goal. You know, the the problem is, I think to some degree, is not that there was a, there was an issue um and it wasn't brought forward in in a manner in which we expect it to be. Um, it's also that uh CGI might think that we should do a different approach that we don't agree with. So we have to kind of work that out. It's kind of renegotiating. It can't just be, we, we're doing it one way and you disagree with it and they, you want to go a different way. And it's, and it's just about methodologies and how we're going to make up time. So it's all of these little inter, integral things that make all of that work happen. So we have to make sure that we agree upon how we're gonna get to the resolution. It's not um just, you know, they missed a schedule and they, you know, or missed a test drop and said, you know, it's not our fault or we did it and we didn't tell you about it. It was, it was, there's more to it than just that. It's, you know, I, we have a problem, let's, you know, we just need to know about it sooner and you need to come to us to help you figure it out. Or if you, and the same back and forth, if if there's something that we're gonna miss, we're gonna have to work with CGI to to work that out so that we stay on schedule. But we're, I think that we're all confident that we are gonna get the system implemented. Um, but the other strain is too, we are gonna, I mean, we're committed to try to get it implemented on schedule and within budget. I mean, so we're all working really, really hard to work within the parameters that you've provided to us. We don't want to come back, even if it, you know, if those resources um do have a, an associated cost. We're gonna be finding it within the budget that we have. So, you know, I've said, that's the expectation that I've delivered and everybody has stepped up to a degree that I don't even think that you can appreciate. I I I hope that you do, but and then maybe I could express it. They're working very, very hard to meet that expectation for you. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Dave, did you want to address us? I don't want to put you on the spot, and you don't have to if you, I mean, if you're good, but, but please.
Yeah.
It will be.
Well, first of all, I agree that there is a tremendous amount of work and effort going into this project. We have over three hundred people between CGI and CalSTRS working on this. And the fact that we can report that we are on schedule and on budget should not be overlooked. And it's really a tribute to their hard work. Um, I don't think we thank them enough for the day in and day out activities that are going on. And, you know, sometimes they're still doing a day job as we're working through all this. So that's, that's number one. Number two, we are committed to the success of this project. And in reality, we are in a mode of success. So we are striving for such a level of perfection that when we all caught that error, it just really took the wind out of our sails because we were doing so well. And then we caught it, teams communicated at a low level about it, but it didn't es- escalate to the top, which is where the breakdown happened. And that's where we have to make some improvements when we talk about improved communications. And I think on the collaboration side, sometimes on projects like this where you're sticking to a budget, you're sticking to a schedule, both camps go into their own corner and try to figure things out as opposed to coming to the same room to work it out. And that's the commitment we have now, that we're gonna go into the same room, let's get in there, figure this out, bring in the decision makers, and let's be transparent about our issues are on both sides, the things we're worried about on both sides. Because you don't want to spend anymore, we don't want to have this cost us anymore. And we all want to achieve the end date of a successful project. So that level of collaboration is starting to uh really pay off for us. And I think it also just is a testament to the fact that we do have little hiccups here and there, but we are working through it. So I have not seen any indication where we are not able to communicate or we are just at a standstill where we are not going to agree. We haven't, we haven't hit those issues. We have been able to negotiate through those with some very creative ways, by the way, to do it. So um our commitment is to make certain that this is a success. It's critical to us. Um, if there are any issues on CalSTRS' side, it's a reflection on us. So we want to help them and we, we know that they'll help us as we go through this. We're a team that's gotta get this done. And we're committed to it. I'm a senior vice president for CGI. I oversee this as an executive. I'm involved with this regularly, uh from our own internal reviews to regular meetings with Cassandra and the executive steering committee. So I I do know what I'm talking about on this directly. I'm I'm involved with it. So with that, you know, we, we appreciate the trust that you've given CGI to be your partner. This is the pension solution system. We get it. And so it's critical to us that we will have success and we work every day to make that happen. Okay?